Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is David Teresi. I'm the North Andover School Committee Chair. I am going to call back to order this meeting of the North Andover School Committee on May 21st, 2020. We were just an executive session. We are back in regular session now, and I'll announce that this meeting is being recorded. I'm going to need to read a few preliminary matters first. The first thing I want to do tonight, I want to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Andrew McDevitt. Amy Mably.
Yes.
Holly Witsky.
Yes.
Helen Picard.
Yes.
Okay, staff that is in attendance. Greg Gilligan, Superintendent.
Yes.
James Mealy.
Yes.
Lorraine Marks.
Yes.
Marcy Bakusi.
Yes.
Other staff. Pat McGravy.
Yep, I'm here, Dave.
And who are you? I can't pronounce the last name. Our North Andover Middle School Principal.
George Goncalves is here.
Yeah, George, thank you. Thanks for being out there. Any other staff on the line, Dr. Gilligan?
Did you get Lorraine Marks and Marcy?
Yes.
Okay, good, we're good.
And other anticipated speakers, Jack Muse, you there?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so again, good evening. This open meeting of the North Andover School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the North Andover School Committee is convening by video conference via the Google Hangouts, as posted on the Tons website identifying how the public may join. Okay, please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees have just made a video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recordings. Okay, some business ground rules. We're going to now turn to the first agenda item. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line to the members, inviting each school committee member to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your name until it is called. Please remember to meet your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name for speaking. Oh, and also, any votes taken today will be taken by a roll call vote. I think that's it. Hold on. Okay, our first order of business is public comment.
Mr. Chair?
Helen, it's okay. Will.
Okay.
Okay, our first order of business is a public comment. This letter is from Jen Goldman, 28 Jared Place. Dear School Committee, I am mom to middle and high school students. For several years, I have voiced my concern of the absence of teaching standards across grades. Now that I and other parents can monitor the remote learning, I have confirmed that students are experiencing different levels of teaching. The teaching ranges from weekly live video learning sessions to no teaching and just homework. I have spoken with school administrators and have not received response that addresses my concern. I have spoken with teachers and told it is teacher's discretion on methods used to teach. I was also told that the new 2020-2023 teacher contracts do not address teaching standards, both online and in the classroom. I would like to know, one, why standards for curriculum aren't publicly made available? Two, why standards for remote learning methods aren't publicly available? Three, if the 2023 contracts will include a set of teaching method standards? And four, what our plan is for future remote learning inclusive of online teaching? I'm also concerned that funding was increased to 4.52% for the 2020-2021 year, but our revised plan for use of the funds has not been shared with the residents. We are less than four weeks from residents voting on the increase. That leaves very little time to watch a presentation, review a revised plan, ask questions, have public comments. I look forward to hearing response to my concerns. Thank you. I've got one other comment from Tom Dugan that I have forwarded. He said it's exceptionally long. A public comment, as you know, lasts three minutes. Tom's letter was much longer than the three minutes, so he just asked that I send it to everyone on the school committee. So that is all I have for public comment, I think. Okay. Our next item of business is the student report. So, Jack, will you identify yourself and give your report, please?
Yeah, hello, everyone. I am Jack. So basically, I am just planning on giving a rundown on the updates for the senior class and the events that have happened and are about to happen in the next few weeks. So today was the first day of the filming of the live graduate of people like walking across stage for graduation. It went very smoothly for, in terms of calling names and the timing. People were able to get in and out in reasonable time within the slots that they had signed up for. So it was really a smooth process, and people were able to take pictures with their senior on the stage, which typically that wouldn't happen. So we've been fortunate to have Mark Lawrence help us be able to provide that for all the students. It was a really smooth process today, and thank you to Mrs. Mably and Mr. McDevitt for presenting the diplomas today. I think the other school committee members are also going to be presenting at various times in the coming week, but thank you to them for helping us out on the first day. So basically, I also just want to give a quick thank you to the community that has organized things like Adopt a Senior and the signs that are lining the driveway, as well as the juniors and SOS who organize putting up the decorations on the tennis courts. Let's say, Congrats 2020 with like the solo cups. All that, all that support has been really great for the senior class because it is really unfortunate the way things have ended, but the support that the community has given us has been really overwhelming, and it's been just a really great representation of this town and the people in it, I think. So we're all really thankful for all that everybody has done for us. In addition to the, to the people who walked across stage today, there will be people graduating seniors that will be filmed tomorrow, on Saturday, on next Tuesday, and next Wednesday. All of those recordings will be compiled into a video alongside the speeches from myself, the valedictorian, salutatorian, Dr. Gilligan, and Mr. Jackson into what would be like a normal graduation ceremony, but people will be viewing it from their home when it premieres on Friday, June 6th, or yeah, no, Friday, June 5th at 6:00 PM. So people should be on the lookout for that and for a link that should be posted to a YouTube stream of that, as well as it'll be shared on NA-CAM through community programming. In addition, the other events that Senior Week is going to include are Scholarship Night, which will be Wednesday, June 3rd at 6:30 PM. That will also be streamed on NA-CAM and on a YouTube link. All the seniors and their families that received scholarships were sent a link to, and then an invitation to that celebration, to celebrate the seniors who have earned scholarships from the school, the community, or just other outside places to recognize those achievements. And then next Thursday, June 4th, will be the, or not next, not next Thursday, two Thursdays from today, will be Awards Night at 6:30, where there will be a presentation of the awards for the senior class, for students who have had achievements in various areas at the high school. So that will be on Thursday, June 4th at 6:30 PM on NA-CAM, and there will be a YouTube link to that as well. As I mentioned, graduation will be shown on NA-CAM on Friday, June 5th at 6:00 PM. And then, in an effort to provide some sort of in-person celebration for the seniors, the car parade has been organized for Saturday, June 6th at noon. Seniors should report to the high school with a parent to drive them on the parade route at between 11:15 and 11:30 AM. And the parade route's going to be the same as the Santa Parade, just it's going to start off from the high school. So we have a very action-packed next few weeks planned for the seniors.
Thank you, Jack. On behalf of the whole school committee, I just want to say, well, first of all, all the work that you've done for this, you know, graduation ceremony and this, the crazies of circumstances. No one ever could anticipate the things that you and your classmates would have to go through. And I would just say, you know, personally, watching you over the last couple of years and come to our meetings, just you're an impressive young man, a real leader for the, for the community. So I know your, your parents and your classmates are super proud of you. I know I am. I think, I'm sure everyone on this call would say a couple of words as well. So why don't I just go down the line, and Helen, if you want to go first?
Thank you, Jack. You've provided so much information to us. You know, when, when we don't have students at the high school, it's very easy to get distance very quickly, and you have really made it feel like we know what's going on, and you've, you've included the younger students who are going to be following in your footsteps in such a way that I feel really confident with what's going to happen next. And often, we say the mark of a good leader is the ones that follow. So thank you so much for that. And I, I would comment, too. I think it's really exciting that Scholarship Night is going to be available on TV because that has been an event that has not been able to include everyone in the community because of the, the size of the venue. So it will be really exciting that that's going to happen, and I'm, you know, I know it's not something you control, but I do hope that that, that that committee will think about doing, you know, the, the CAM presentation in future years so that, you know, whatever, extended family members who can't be there could be there in spirit. So I think that's, some good things are going to come out of this, you know, this whole COVID experience. But thank you, Jack. You've been great.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you, Helen. Andrew, do you want to go next?
Sure, you know, I'm just, I'm really going to echo what Mrs. Picard and Mr. Teresi said, and really want to say thank you, Jack. You've been a great advocate and a great source of information from the high school perspective, and really appreciate everything you've done. And I think what was pretty remarkable is over the past couple of weeks, as you guys have kind of navigated this, there's been a lot that's been put on you, probably more than any other senior class president in terms of designing and developing and graduation, and I'm sure a lot of frustration, you know, from classmates who want things exactly as they were. And, you know, you, you've been fantastic and great, and it was really awesome to see you today with all of your classmates, kind of as they came up. They were all really glad to see you. I think they might have just been glad to see anybody. I'm not saying it was, you know, but they, they were truly glad to see you, and I, and I think that that speaks volumes to the impact that you've had. And really thank you, probably from the class of 2020, but the, the town and the school committee as well. We really appreciate everything, Jack. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. I appreciate it.
Amy?
So, Mr. McDevitt hit, and everyone has hit all the key points. I would like to thank you, Jack, for your tremendous leadership as class president, but also for your, your leadership over the last two years coming to our school committee meetings. You've always been well-prepared, and you've always shared a lot of good information with us, and that's a big commitment that you've added to your already very task-heavy life. So we thank you for all that you've done. And I'd like to thank you, but also if you could pass it on to Lily and Anat and Caleb as well to thank them, the other class officers, for all that you've done to lead the class of 2020, particularly the last two years. We appreciate it and look forward to celebrating you further over the next several days and weeks and months.
Thank you. I'll definitely pass that on to the other class officers as well. They've been amazing with all their work that they put in as well.
Holly?
Not much new I can add to this. Thank you, Jack. You have been awesome at the school committee meetings. My daughter had you as a counselor at Summer Fund last year. So you're definitely well-respected and well-regarded in the community, and you're going to go far. Thank you for everything you have shared with us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Jack, just so, it would be great to say goodbye in person, but I'm sure we will cross paths, you know, hopefully in the near future when we can get out of our houses again. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, you know, Greg, you, and Principal Jackson, and I know Ms. Mably were very instrumental and helpful in organizing all these efforts as well. So my heart and my, my thanks to all of you. So, Jack, thank you very much. I think you are dismissed for the, the final time.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's been fun the last few years doing this, so thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Enjoy your summer.
You, too.
You.
Okay, what a great kid. Our next item on the agenda is, I'll make sure I'm, okay, I'm good. Have our, our annual public hearing on school choice. I think for the record, we need to go and have a motion to begin and start the public hearing. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll move that we. Second.
That was Andrew McDevitt to have the public hearing seconded by Holly. Sorry, we had to roll call all this stuff. Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Holly, how do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, Dr. Gilligan, can you just tee this up for us? We have the public hearing on school choice.
Yeah, certainly, every year, every municipality and city and town in Massachusetts has to vote on school choice. We have never done it. As you know, from my entry plan and from all the things that we've tried to do through the strategic plan, class size has always been number one. Therefore, you know, the vote, the recommendation from the superintendent is to vote no on school choice. It's where you can tuition kids in from other towns, and there are not many, there are few around here, but not many, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. This public hearing was duly posted and noticed in our local paper as according to law. We received no feedback, no, no comment on it whatsoever. So at this time, I would accept a motion from the floor to not participate in school choice for the 2021, 2020, 2021 year. David, before you have that vote, don't you have to come out of the public hearing and then have the vote? Had the vote outside the public hearing. Thank you. I didn't realize that, so let's come out of the vote. So I, that's right, you're right.
Or make a motion to come out of the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to enter, exit public hearing made by Ms. Mably, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So now we're out of the public hearing, and now is our time for a vote. As I was saying, I would accept the motion from the floor not to participate in school choice for the 2020-2021 year.
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's give Helen a chance there. So Holly made the motion, Helen seconded that. Holly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Helen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we will not be participating in school choice. Thank you, and thank you, Doc, community, for making sure I got that right procedurally. Okay, next item is consent agenda approval of minutes that are in your packet. I would accept a motion at this point. If there is such a mo, am I unmute? No, not yet.
So I will approve the minutes as presented in the packet for the May 7th, 2020 school committee.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Holly. Andrew, how do you vote? Oh, sorry, excuse me, I apologize. Any discussion, any discussion or edits on, on that before we vote? Hearing none. Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much. Thank you, your patron. This, this isn't always easy to do. You always forget little things when you... Okay, Greg, superintendent's report, please.
Great. Before I introduce Mr. McGravy, I'd like to have Assistant Superintendent Lorraine Marks just talk briefly about kindergarten registration and kindergarten screening for next year.
Okay, this is Lorraine, and I just want to put out there that we, we are accepting kindergarten registrations right now. We don't have a high number of registrations at this point. We're far below what we typically have at this time of year. So we are doing some reaching out. We are putting a notice on CAM. If you are hearing this at school committee, if you go right to the homepage of the North Andover Public Schools, there are links there to register. We are hoping to have some police signs around town, so if you see those or if you have a neighbor that has a child that you know should be registering for kindergarten, please pass the word on because we are trying to get those registrations in and make sure we have all of our students accounted for as we have to plan for the number of classes that we have at kindergarten as well. Screening, typically screening takes place today and tomorrow, usually the Thursday and Friday before the Memorial Day holiday. Obviously, we cannot do that at this point. We are hoping that we can do that in the second half of August before school starts. That's what we're tentatively planning right now, but of course, that will depend on how things evolve over the summer as everything loosens up. So we will keep everyone posted, but that is what we're planning at this point. So please, if you know someone or if you have a child that needs to register for kindergarten, please go on our website and get them registered. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Marks, and we're very thankful the North Andover Police and Officer Mark Wilson is putting up one of his flashing signs on Route 125. You know, register for kindergarten, get it done with the web address. So we're excited, and hopefully we'll get those numbers up. Thank you. All right. Next up here in the superintendent's report, we will have Mr. McGravy from the North Andover Middle School, and I know that Principal Goncalves is on. I know that he has a partner from Harvard University with him, but he is presenting tonight about civics education in his pilot class in 8B. And I think the, the best part about, you know, when I get a chance to get over there, particularly when I was in person, that it wasn't just about, you know, being engaged and advocacy and action. They do a really nice job, and he does a tremendous job about listening, questioning, and promoting respectful discourse and dialogue and compromise. So without further ado, Patrick McGravy from the North Andover Middle School, social studies teacher, grade eight.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Gilligan, and members of the school committee. I really appreciate the opportunity to have this and discuss this with you. I think tonight, we definitely want to make it all about the kids because I think they're the ones that deserve the majority of the credit for the success this year. I do have two colleagues with me. I have my principal, George Goncalves, and I also have Michael Lau from the Democratic Knowledge Project, who I've been working with. So if it's okay, before I just say a few things, I would appreciate it if Mr. Goncalves might want to say a few things from the perspective of being the leader of the school, and then I'll let Michael just briefly tell the superintendent, the leadership team, and the school committee a little bit about the Democratic Knowledge Project, if that's okay. So George, if you'd like to talk a little bit about what you've seen this year, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, everyone. This is George Goncalves, principal of North Andover Middle School, proud principal of NAMS. So when the history and social science frameworks changed 2018 with the intended implementation in 2020, Pat McGravy, grade eight, social studies teacher, was overjoyed, to say the least. This is the man who brought civics day to NAMS. This is the man who regularly schedules speakers to come to present to students in the school. So this curriculum, when it was updated, really was in his wheelhouse. And Pat made a lot of connections over the years with different people, and he is often in the right place at the right time. And when he met Michael and was introduced to him and bent his ear and bent his ear again, and they exchanged phone numbers and they chatted, next thing you know, Pat's coming to me saying, "George, there's this awesome bakery in Boston near Harvard called Flower," because he knew that would entice me to go. And we went and met with the DKP people and Democratic Knowledge Project, and they had a great curriculum that would really support the new frameworks. And Pat was overjoyed to implement it. I supported it because we need to pilot. We need to get some data, and the year's gone really well, and we're planning with the other teachers as far as what the civics curriculum will look like in years to come. So that's my brief intro, and if you know me, I'm not very good at being brief. So I kick it back to you, Pat, or to you, Michael?
Thank you, George. Michael, if you wouldn't mind just taking a few moments, and I, Michael, I appreciate you coming on here and speaking to the school committee. Do you just want to introduce yourself and just say a few things about the Democratic Knowledge Project, the year-long curriculum? And you've been to North And, you've come to North Andover. We've been in contact. Just some of your observations about what's been happening this year at NAMS?
Yeah, well, thank you for having me, and it's an honor to be with you all virtually. And I want to start by giving Pat a big shout-out for all his work and hard effort this year and his continuous connection building. He, he, he reached out to us late, early last, last fall. He had a passion for this, and it continues to this day. He already, I don't know if he, if you know this, but he already led a webinar for civic educators this morning. So he's had a marathon day, and he's, he's a superstar. At the Democratic Knowledge Project, we've, we've really been focused and very excited about the new standards for Massachusetts, especially in social studies, and especially the carve-out for civics throughout the curriculum, but also especially in the eighth grade year. And so over the last year, we've built out our curriculum, a six-unit, full-year-length curriculum for eighth graders. We piloted it with Cambridge, but we knew that Cambridge is a different and very unique subset of students and a different kind of community than the, the nation as a whole and the Commonwealth as a whole. So we really were excited to engage with pilators this year from across the state, and Pat was one of the first to sign on. We met with George last summer, and we were off and running. And so Pat and his students have given us an incredible amount of insight and an incredible amount of wisdom, and we have really tried our hardest to co-design and improve our curriculum, make it more standards-aligned to the, to what the state is calling for so that we can help young people become engaged civic participants in any way we can. So Pat and our, all of our pilators this year have been really integral to us learning, and, and all of his students have, have been really a, a great testament to the work that he's done and, and the excitement that's possible with teaching civics because we, we think civics and civic skills and knowledge and, and capacities are taught and learned, and so they should be taught and learned, and we're really excited that North Andover has, has really made that commitment, and Pat's really led by making that commitment.
Thank you, Michael, very much. I appreciate that. George alluded to this earlier, but just a little bit of a timeline for the school committee and for the leadership team. As Michael and George said, and as you all know, the framework's changed in 2018, and technically, eighth grade is supposed to do a year of civics. In the fall of 2018, Mr. Goncalves asked me to be on the CDHM, which was a cross-district history and social studies mapping committee, where we were going to kind of get the standards and kind of lay them out. I worked with many, many colleagues across the state in eighth grade. Coincidentally, at North Andover High School, where the first meeting was, we started talking, and I was very, very interested. We stayed in contact. Fast forward to the spring, they were having an informational meeting in Cambridge. I went to it. I was very, very excited about it. I met with George and Kristin Ando, the Director of Humanities. We had a meeting in the spring. They didn't say no. They didn't say... We had a meeting in the spring. Um, they didn't say no, they didn't say yes. Um, and then George and I went to Cambridge in July, I think. And we met with Michael and Danielle Allen, who is another person from the Democratic Knowledge Project. And we were all in. So basically, what I decided to do was pilot with my eight B students. Um, from September to March, we did the units, the live learning. And then, of course, from March to now, we are doing everything remotely uh on Google Classroom. Uh, this story will continue over the summer. I am gonna be on uh working with Michael and the Democratic Knowledge Project. Um, going through the curriculum and trying to make it better. So that's kinda a little bit of a story. In terms of what's been happening, um from August until March, uh I did three curriculum units with my students. The first one was an identity unit. The second one was called How to Write a Constitution. And the third one that we were just getting into was something called the Philosophical Foundations. Um, out of the box, the first unit is about civic identity, values and agency. And we did talk about quite a lot of, a wide variety of things. Oh, really allowing us the opportunity to kinda get to know one another while at the same time talking about what is civic identity? Um, what are values? And we looked at things like privilege and socioeconomic status uh and discrimination. And kinda, kinda got the ball rolling there. Um, and that was a very long unit. Um, obviously, it took me a little longer than I anticipated because it was a new form of teaching, um very, very interactive. I I tell people, there is no way a teacher can ever sit at their desk uh when they teach this curriculum because it's all about getting the kids engaged. Um, so moving on with unit two, that one was really the meat of civics. That was more about looking at the Declaration of Independence, looking at the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Some highlights from that unit would definitely be um Portrait of a Tyrant video game. The Democratic Knowledge Project um created a video game that takes you through the American Revolution. And we were uh game, you know, beta game testers, whatever you wanna call it. Um, that was a very cool experience. Uh, it's a work in progress. It's a role-playing game, very unfamiliar with. So my students were definitely the master on that one and really helped me tremendously. Had about sixty of them after school. They kind of beta-tested it, and then we kinda all worked together on that. Um, the other thing, some other highlights um from now, from, sorry, from uh August until um March was my civics in action um monthly uh talks. Um, those were great where I had an opportunity for lots of wonderful people to come in. Um, our brand-new town manager, um, you know, Melissa, uh Murphy Rodriguez, she was on the job, I think, for ten days. She kicked it off. Um, and then we also had Senator DiZoglio, Senator Tar, um State Representatives Minicucci, Win, um Vargas. And then, of course, Rick, Rick Gorman from the youth center came, uh Mr. DeSalvo, the town moderator. So we had about nine, we had about nine of them, and they were great. And 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 I think the kids really, really enjoyed them. They were very interactive. The students gave me a lot of feedback and a, a political speech from politicians was not gonna cut it. So we tried to make it as engaging or as interactive as possible, and we did do that. Um, and then two more things I'll just briefly mention. Um, we had an opportunity for the Constitution Society at Harvard Law School to physically come to NAMs and lead us in a Tinker versus Des Moines debate. And I don't think the Harvard Law students were thrilled about coming, to be honest with you, because it was community service. And I don't think the NAMs kids, they were like, what's going on? And um wow, they just hit it off beautifully. I mean, to the point where I really felt like a third wheel. Uh, they were all engaged. They were all about debating. Uh, to the point where um the Harvard Law students invited us in February vacation. I took about thirty of them to Harvard Law School. And we got to get a tour of Harvard Law School. So that was, that was an amazing experience for the kids. Learning how to debate civics and Supreme Court cases from Harvard Law students. You cannot get any better than that. And then the best, probably one of the highlights was the week that we left school, that Monday and Tuesday, we were actually the last school group to go to the E M K Institute for the U S Senate. Um, we went Monday and Tuesday, and then, of course, Friday was the, was the, was when we all left. And I have been taking my students for three years to the E M K, and it's always been nice. But the amount of engagement and the amount of kids that spoke and the amount of kids that got involved and even the E M K staff were blown away at the knowledge base that the kids had. We did a simulation on the uh immigration debate. Um, so that's definitely some of the highlights from the live teaching. So now we go into remote learning, and remote learning, of course, was a challenge for a lot of us. Um, and what I tried to do is I wanted to keep the civics in action going. So I had an idea where I would do virtual civics in action talks. And basically, I was trying to keep the kids as engaged as impos- as possible. So what I would do is just to kinda give you, I'll give you one example. Um, last week, I had two judges from the Lawrence Court who come on Civics Day. They did a talk with me, uh all about how to be a judge and how to do trials during COVID, virtual trials. And then we started talking about appeals and due process, and it was just great. And so what would happen is I'd film it. The wonderful people at North Andover CAM would edit it, upload it, put it on, um, make it a YouTube video. I would then show it to my students on Monday. That was their first lesson of the week. You know, four thirty-minute lessons a week, right? And then this on Google Classroom. And then the second thing we do is a reflection. And then the third and fourth thing is we create some kind of product. Uh, and this week, we're doing a debate on New Jersey versus T L O. So they're creating a, a debate type of thing between them. And we did a number of things, and in some of the supplemental resources I I, that I gave to the school committee and the leadership team, you'll see some s- some sample work. Um, so those were, that that kinda takes you through what's going on. Um, my, I really, I really wanted my students to be here, but unfortunately, they can't. So one of the things that I was doing with my students is we do a bi-weekly, weekly political civics talk show um called the McGravy Group, loosely based on the McLaughlin Group from PBS. I don't know if you remember the McLaughlin Group, uh the cranky Washington Post reporter that would do a roundtable. Did a couple of those. And um we did one of those as testimony. So I believe um Mr. Mealy has that video or has access to it. And I'm gonna allow um Dr. Mealy to cut it whenever he would like. I know we're really pressed for time. Unfortunately, you know, I had about forty kids volunteer. I had to narrow it down to fourteen. And the video, the, the entire video is on North Andover CAM and everyone has it. But um I don't know if Dr. Mealy, if you wanted to show, you know, maybe two students possibly testifying, and then maybe we could cut it and go to questions.
Trying to find it. Um, which one is it?
It's a YouTube. So it's, it says, it's number six on the item that Bev did. It says eight B student testimony via N A CAM, and it's a YouTube clip. It's right, if you click on the agenda, um and you click on my little thing.
And there's a link, um, the first link?
No, it's number six. It's number six. It says eight B student testimony, and then it says W W dot YouTube dot com watch.
Dr. Amelia, just put it in the chat if that helps.
I have it.
Okay. And maybe after two students, you can cut it. Think it might be muted. Yeah.
Oh, Jim, the volume.
On me? Oh, gotcha.
The students become the master. Um, what I've seen from these students and from all my students has been amazing. Um, just for the record, school committee, uh it's Thursday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty. Um, we are uh here at the school committee meeting. Uh, Dr. Gilligan and the school committee have asked me to present on year one of the eight B civics pilot. Um, we are in the first year of the civics pilot, working with the new uh civic standards and working with Harvard University and the Democratic Knowledge Project. Just a little background, school committee, um, the students and I started this journey together in late August of two thousand nineteen. And that went until Friday the thirteenth with live lessons. And then from then till now, we have done remote learning with the civics pilot. Um, in that August to the March timeframe, we did a lot. I'll give you a report about that. We did three curriculum units together, an identity unit, uh creating the constitution unit. And then at the end, um the philosoph- philosophical foundations and rights, which unfortunately we got uh co- got kinda cut out of. Uh, one of the students is coming in. Um, if she could just um mute herself, and I will be calling on her momentarily. There was also a video game that we explored. Um, a few of the students in this group took a trip to Harvard University, to Harvard Law School with me. And Harvard Law students actually came to us, which was amazing, and so much more, and so much more. So the questions that all the students are gonna be answering are uniform. They are the same. Um, just for the record, I know I only have twenty-five minutes. So members of the school committee and Dr. Gilligan, if obviously I go beyond my time. Um, you can just show the rest of the video and, you know, we can put it on North Andover CAM or whatever. I know you have a lot of things on the agenda tonight. We don't wanna take all the time. Um, so the five questions that I'll be asking all the civic students where we're reflecting on the year is what did you know about civics prior to this year? What do you know now? What have you learned? What was your favorite thing um in the past year and why? Virtually, how are things going? All fourteen of these students have been successful on remote learning. I want them to tell me why. Um, year two, obviously, they're all going on to bigger and better things ne- next year. There will be a new group of students. Um, whether it's live or virtual, I want them to tell me what they see for the future of the civics program. And where do they see the civics program in five years? They'll be in college at that point, but where would they like to see it? And then, of course, I'd like some reflection on tweaks, suggestions, improvements um for it. So I think we're good. I think we're all ready, and we're gonna begin with the first student. Don't worry, you don't, don't have to swear on a Bible or anything like that. This is all very, very informal. Um, so Gabe, you can unmute yourself. Uh, Gabe, are you there?
Yes, sir.
So Gabe, could you please introduce, introduce yourself to the school committee?
My name is Gabriel Spies. Nice to meet you.
Great. So Gabe, could you tell us a little bit about um, you know, in terms of what did you know last year about civics compared to now and what you've learned?
So last year, I knew
Did you just fill a little time? You just tell us a little?
Uh, yes. So last year, you know, I didn't know too, too much. I knew um a little bit about government, a little bit of, uh, we talked about the silver, silver war. I didn't know too, too much, but then this year is when I started actually getting uh a lot more into it, and I started learning a lot more about it. It's very, very interesting.
Okay, great. That's great, Gabe. So Gabe, could you, you, you were a student that I always could count on being engaged and really get into everything? Are you from, what if you like?
Can you repeat that one more time? Sorry, cut out.
No problem. Gabe, what's been your favorite thing, buddy? What's your favorite thing?
Um, my favorite thing about the class was probably when we went to the E M K Institute and we learned about uh more about government and how it worked.
And why? Why did you like that the best?
Um, cuz it really gave us a feel uh on how it was like to be a part of it and how everything inside actually worked out.
Okay, great. So we're gonna let another student in. Um, yeah, Desmond, you, you just wanna mute yourself, and we'll be calling on you in a moment. So welcome. Okay, Gabe, virtually, you know, all of you have been very successful. Remote learning has had pros and cons across the United States. For you, Gabe, every week, you know, we're going into the second month, why have you been successful? Wh- why is remote learning working with the civics curriculum?
Um, I would say it's working because it's teaching us in a way how to um try and manage stuff by yourself in a way. I think it gives us like a little bit more, um. Yeah, like we're starting.
A little more independence?
Yes.
So, Gabe, I'm gonna ask the last question kinda as a two, two-parter. Um, where do you see this program next year? Where do you see it in five years? And are there any additions or suggestions that you would like to make? That'll be your last series of questions.
Um, I would say I could see this, like, this civic pilot going worldwide and just going far because of how um interesting and engaging it actually is.
Great. Wow, that's bold, Gabe. Worldwide, no pressure there. Uh, okay, so, Gabe, thank you so much, and you're gonna nick the call, and thank you for being first.
Thank you.
All right, we're now going to move to the second student. Um, if Kara, you could introduce yourself to the school committee, please.
Hi, my name is Kara Bernard.
Excellent. Welcome, Kara. So Kara, um, what did you know last year compared to now? Uh, what have you learned? Uh, what kind of uh civic growth do you think you've gone through? Uh, and you know, in about a year?
Well, I've always been sort of civically involved, having helped organize the um walkouts for like the March for Our Lives campaign for the last couple of years, but I had never actually had a word to go through with that. So I have been civically involved. I just never had a word to properly put that with.
Cool, that's a great answer. That's a great an- answer. So Kara, again, like Gabe, you were someone that was really always all in. I really appreciate it. What, what's, what's been your favorite experience this year in the civics program?
I really, really liked all of the speakers, my favorite of which being the Harvard Law students, just because of the immersion and like getting to actually work on what it's like to work on like a case like that was just really, really engaging for me.
And did it surprise you, um, the experience? Is it, did you think it was gonna be something and it was something different, or what did you think of that?
I had no idea what we were gonna do going into it, but actually going into it was one of the most immersive civic experiences I've ever had in my life, and I really enjoyed it.
Kara, could, and the school committee, I, 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 I don't think any of them were there. Um, can you just very briefly just give us a synopsis? What, what did you guys do with the Harvard students?
We discussed this case that came from, it's called the Tinker Case. I don't exactly remember where it happened, but it was to do with
In Iowa.
In Iowa, wearing armbands to pro- like to protest a war. And the school trying to like cut down on that and not letting them do it. So it was a debate on that.
Great, so we had a debating class. That's fantastic. Um, so virtually, Kara, you've also been very, very successful, remote learning. Why do you think you've been so successful turning in quality work every single week?
Because I think civics is one of those topics where it's not hard to do unless you are like completely like living under a rock. Because it's literally taking your opinion and just expressing it through different means.
Okay, great. That's a, that's a cool way of saying it. Okay, so Kara, obviously, you're all going on to bigger and better things next year. I would love you guys to all come back and do a year two of civics with me, but we can't. Um, so what do you see the future of the civics program at NAMs, next five years? Um, you know, what is, what is a prediction? What are some things that you would like to see? And, and tweaks or changes, little suggestions?
I think this program's amazing. It is one of the most engaging and just intelligent programs I've ever been a part of. And I'm really glad I got to take part in it this year. And I hope it spreads countrywide. And I really, really do hope, like Gabe said, it spreads worldwide because I think it could help lots of kids become more active with politics and local politics and anything in their major life. And one tweak I would add is I'd focus more on modern-day issues cuz that's what's on all of our minds currently.
Great. Kara, thank you so much. Fritz, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, Fritz, so could you please introduce yourself to the school committee?
Hello, I am Fritz Lo.
Okay, great. Fritz, welcome. So Fritz, just tell us where were you last? Yeah, Jim, you can cut it if you want. And, and you know, I know you guys won't have a lot of time.
We'll make sure we tell Christina you cut out her kid.
You can tell Christina that, and he did get on technically, Gabe, so you know. Um, but I wanna
But I want to respect everyone's time. I want to respect everyone's time, but you all have a link to that video I put in the agenda. So feel free to look at that at your time. I, I think they do a much better job and they articulate in a much better way than I do about the program. So pretty much, I thought we'd make it all about the students and end there, and I really appreciate you all allowing me this opportunity. And George and Michael, thank you so much for being here with me. And Dr. Gilligan, thank you so much for this opportunity. Uh, just in closing, one of the things about the Democratic Knowledge Project that they try to teach students to be civically engaged, especially with the civics action project, is to make allies, civic allies. Allies that I have in North Andover are unbelievable, from George to Cheryl Romando, to Steve Wrigley, to Rick Gorman, to the town, I could just go on and on and on. And it's, it's just been a great year and I can't wait for year two and what we're gonna do next year. So thank you very much. Thanks a lot, Dr. Gilligan. I appreciate it.
Anytime, Patrick. We appreciate all the work you do and really exciting to get kids involved early on in the democratic process. Thanks.
Okay, well, Patrick, you do have a ton of allies and you have a ton of allies because you just won't take no for an answer. You just beat people down till they say yes. So, um, any questions from the, the members? Helen, any questions?
No questions, just real gratitude. That was real fun. It's fun to hear student voice and, you know, I'm, I'm just really glad that I'll have the opportunity to see the rest of this.
Amy?
I do have just one question. It's very exciting to see. Thank you for this. I love it. Not meant to be a tough question, but so while you're teaching this, what's happening in the other two eighth grade classes? They're not doing any of this because this is a pilot, is that correct?
So, yeah, I'll probably let George talk about this in a moment, but technically, the state of Massachusetts is requiring civics in the two thousand twenty, twenty-one year. So my two colleagues continued with the US History One curriculum. And I was the one piloting it. In the fall, all three of us will be moving forward with civics. And George, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So this was an opportunity for Pat with the help and support of colleagues, especially the Democratic Knowledge Project, to implement this curriculum, this pilot, this, this new curriculum that has already undergone so many updates, improvements, and changes. And it's thanks to that data that we can begin planning for next year. So all of this year, Pat and his two colleagues and I have been meeting with Kristin Ando to plan for next year. And the Democratic Knowledge Project curriculum has amazing ideas, but that isn't to say there aren't other ideas too. So we have been looking at an exhaustive list of ideas in order to prepare to teach this curriculum next year. And based on what we see, there's a lot to choose from and a lot of great things. Obviously, what you heard today is the Pat McGravy spin on this with lots of guest speakers. That is very unique. People who are piloting this curriculum are not bringing in all of these senators and state reps to their classes. This is something Pat has done before and it fit well with this curriculum. So you will see this curriculum in different forms next year at NAMM's. And it's really unfortunate schools closed because every week we were, we were meeting and we were getting a lot done. And that slowed down quite a bit in this remote learning environment, but it'll ramp up soon.
Thank you very much.
Amy, just to add to that, my son is in one of the other eighth grade classes and I know they've done some civics, not to this extent, but for sure, he was doing, learning a lot about civics this fall.
Excellent. Thank you, Holly. I have an eighth grader next year, so.
Holly, Holly, anything else you want to add to that or is that it?
Uh, I just want to say thank you so much. I really enjoyed that presentation. I love all the work that you do, Pat. Civics Day was always one of my favorite days of the year, so I was so sad we got to miss it. We had to miss it this year, but be back next year.
Andrew?
Sure, I'd just like to take a quick moment. My son is in Pat's class this year and part of the pilot program. Having had my older son go through regular kind of American history two years, or four years ago, I guess now, and, and just seeing the difference. It's, it's really a remarkable program. It's, it's, it's an asset. I think Pat's certainly an asset in terms of, you know, what he provides and the level that he brings us to. And the exposure that these students get to members of the community is, is really so, so valuable. And I think it sparked a lot of great conversations in our house and some pretty healthy debates. So it's really, it's been great to kind of have that type of exposure kind of come out. And, and fun to see sometimes in an eighth grade line. So it's, it's really very good. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, thank you, Pat. And just from my perspective, two, two points. First of all, when I look at you, I realize how old the both of us have become. It's been a, been a long time. But those, I've known Pat since I was in high school. Second of all, obviously, as someone who's been a, been a rep, been a selectman, been a schoolman, that I really have a passion for public service, I think this is awesome that you are, you're getting kids at a very early age. I know my interest in this didn't peak in, in civics and in, in public life didn't peak till, you know, college. But it's good to get them young, get them thinking about this stuff and getting them engaged. So, uh, great job and it's always, always a pleasure to see you, Pat.
Thanks a lot. I really, really appreciate it, Gabe. And for everyone, in the resources at the end, like I said, there, I actually asked some parents on AP to write some feedback. So there are some testimonials from the parents of AP students. And then there's some sample work on remote learning. Uh, and then there is a webinar that Mr. Goncalve talked about that I did, kind of talking about the civics in action speak talks a little bit more. But thank you all very much. I really appreciate it. This has been great.
Thanks, Pat.
David, could I, could I add to one thing?
Sure.
In, in addition to being excited about what the kids are learning, I'm really excited about this presentation because it showed us how they're learning in this remote atmosphere. To see kids so comfortable doing that, you know, that Google meets interaction with you and to see that they're so ready and to hear you say that they're, you know, fourteen or whatever on the video and an additional, you know, twice as many who really wanted the opportunity, like that level of excitement for, for remote learning. Those of us who don't have children learning in our homes right now, it's hard for us to imagine how this is all working. So that, that piece of it is also exciting for me.
Yeah, and, and Helen, I really appreciate that comment, but I also want to say that, you know, teaching US History One, I mean, I, I know I could have probably done it remotely, but with this civics pilot, the kids had, they, they all bought in. They were all bought in. So for them to continue, they wanted to continue doing it. And, and I don't want to say we, we didn't miss a beat, but it was pretty smooth. And, you know, I'm getting about, you know, you know, about eighty percent of the kids are doing their work, which, you know, the national average is about fifty percent. So it, it's, it's been the gift that keeps on giving. So remotely, it's working very well.
Thanks again, Pat. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, George. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, Greg, anything else on your superintendent's report tonight?
Uh, nothing else tonight on the superintendent's report.
Okay. Uh, move to the chair's report real quickly because there has been some scuttlebutt out in the public about graduation again. Um, and in relation to why we're having town meeting and why we can't have graduation. Uh, just so the, the public knows and Greg, maybe you can touch on this a little bit. The Commissioner Riley did put out a memo today talking about graduation ceremonies. And in his memo, he makes it clear that they can't have any outdoor graduation ceremonies prior to July eighteenth. Anything that is held has to be kind of like a car parade and what we're doing are, are virtual graduations. So the decision not to have graduation but have town meeting was not our decision, contrary to what people may be saying out there in Neverland. But the, the commission did put out guidance that after July nineteenth, it may, may operative word being may, happen outside and there will be more information forthcoming. So I think we're all hopeful and optimistic that uh, we could do an outdoor graduation on, on July twenty-fourth. I just want to put that out there. Okay, that's one thing I want to say in the chair's report. Moving to old business, I had jumped the gun earlier and we already took the vote on school participation, so that's all set. Greg, on the Student Opportunity Act, please?
Yeah, Jim, if you could just pull up the slides and we'll go through. But the Student Opportunity Act was put in place and, as you know, we all advocated for it with our legislators and, and representatives, state senators, to push for it. And it was intended to, you know, close the achievement gaps for traditionally marginalized students. Due to the COVID nineteen situation, the Commissioner of Education has now extended this deadline to June nineteenth. And he believes it's probably going to be extended even longer until he gets a clearer picture of what the state budget looks like. So we have a plan to put in some early literacy, some other programming for our students to get ahead. This was supposed to be a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So out of all the money in the state, eighty percent of it went to thirty-one districts. And if you got over a million dollars, you fill out a long form. And if you got under a million, you had a short form. So ours was the short form. And this is something that we will have to submit after this second reading. And we'd like to just have it voted so we can submit it. But make no mistake about it, I don't think there, there's any chance of us seeing this hundred and forty-four thousand dollars from the Commonwealth.
Okay, so what is the actual, well, first of all, are there any questions from the members? Helen, any questions?
No.
Andrew?
All right, not right now.
Holly?
No.
And Amy?
Not at this time.
So Greg, what is the actual vote we're taking? Just to approve the, the plan in place and are we actually submitting? So what's the actual vote you want us to take tonight?
Uh, the vote is to approve the Student Opportunity Act plan as presented in the second reading tonight. So that if the state does actually have a time that we have to submit it, it will already have been approved and we'll be able to do so. But the deadline has now been pushed off two or three times.
And you don't, you don't anticipate that changing? I mean, you don't anticipate the, the plan changing before that in case it does get funded? Well, I, I can't imagine under any circumstances that would happen, but-
Mr. Chair, prior to even COVID, there was a lot of questions around communities who got big money. How much the town or city was going to actually use that, you know, from their chapter seventy funding? Like, was that on top of the chapter seventy funding, which it was supposed to be? So it was a, you know, a little bit of a controversial issue to begin with in budgets, but it, it's not looking very good at this point.
Okay. Okay, what's the, would someone make a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act plan that's presented in the packet?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Picard, that was Helen, right? You made the motion, Helen? And Holly seconded it. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Helen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. Thank you, Dr. Gilligan.
Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing else on the agenda. Before I move on to adjourn, does anyone want to add their own public comment at this time or raise any issues? Holly, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we have town elections coming up, so if you haven't gotten your ballot in, Helen and I are both up for reelection and we would love your votes, June second.
Okay. Helen, go ahead.
Yeah, civics in action right there. I have the opportunity to go to the Health Advisory Committee meeting yesterday and I truly feel like I was among the heroes in North Andover. It's truly amazing what our nurses are doing, what our town is doing, what our Board of Health are doing. So I just wanted to let folks know that in addition to everything that they're doing, our nurses are doing online health education with teachers and they're stepping into classrooms in Google meets and giving health tips, such as dental care. Remember, our students can't go to the dentist right now, so they need to pay attention to that. They're doing sun safety. They're doing conversations about screen times and limits and getting outside and being active and healthy. They're doing outreach to families and they're delivering medications. They're delivering meals. It's really tremendously helpful. As well, our, our SEL team is doing weekly meetings with families and tips on how to keep mental health within, within their, you know, their thoughts and abilities. Our special educators are providing telehealth for those students who have it on IEPs. So those are some of the things that are happening. Our youth center is doing online programming for girls groups and fitness and other things. So there's a tremendous amount going on. And as a public service announcement, I want to say that pediatricians are open for well care. And they are open for vaccines. So families who have children who are scheduled for well visits with pediatricians should be planning to go to those. That's really important right now. And then lastly, you know, I want to wish folks a good Memorial Day and encourage them to participate in the door decoration, the patriotic door decoration that our patriotic town committee has invited us to do and there's a place we can take pictures and submit those and they can show them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Amy, anything?
Uh, nothing new to add that you haven't already heard this evening about, I've been very busy with graduation things. So looking forward to that happening all this week.
Andrew?
I'll just take a quick moment and thank the officers and all of the students of the class of two thousand twenty and really say congratulations to you. This is not the graduation that you anticipated or thought of when you started your senior year. No prom, no, no online or, or no gathering in person to celebrate, you know, signing the yearbooks. You know, truly walking across the stage in, in front of everybody. And I, I know that this is very difficult and I, I do want to just say and acknowledge, you know, that these are tough days for everybody, but congratulations to the class of two thousand twenty and thank you so much for the mark that you've made here in North Andover.
Thank you, Andrew. Well said. Our next meeting will be on June fourth, so we will obviously have a meeting prior to the, the graduation. I mean, obviously, they're filming it now, so we can say our congratulations again then. But, okay, Greg, any other further business on your end?
No, I would just echo Helen's comments really quickly. You know, we've had a lot of praise for our teaching staff over time and they continue to do a remarkable job under challenging conditions for everyone. But that said, I want to say thank you to the public for all the nice notes and the kind words they send in. It's really inspirational. And I really want to, I don't do it often enough publicly, but I want to thank my team. Jim, Dr. Millian Operations with Erica Murphy and the food, Mike Grant with, you know, giving out over twelve hundred Chromebooks. Lorraine Marks just doing a remarkable job with Kristen and Kara around the curriculum piece. And Marcy, you know, Marcy's a new, new first year Director of Special Education. And she has stepped right up and not missed a beat. So I just feel remarkably lucky and fortunate to work with such a great team and I wanted to say it publicly.
Thank you, Greg. Couldn't agree more. And let's say a big thank you to Cam and Brian, who's in the booth again tonight for coming out. I really appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna go back into executive session. So could I get a motion to adjourn the regular session and move back into executive session, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Amy, second by Helen. Uh, Amy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Helen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. We are now adjourned. It will be an executive session. She on the flip side. Thank you, everyone.